Good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order of the City Council for Monday, April 3, 2023. Entertain the roll call.
Go for it.
Here.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
Myers.
Kengis.
Present.
Rothie.
Present.
Snyder.
Here.
Yeah, I sent you a message, but yeah, Julie's ill this evening, so we'll proceed with her. So move into item C, the Pledge of Allegiance basis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Move to item D, the approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen, council discussion if any. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carries. Section E is the approval of the minutes from the March 20, 2023 regular meeting.
I'll move approval of the March 20, 2023 regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Drinkow to approve those minutes. Any council discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carries. Skipping over section F, except for a short comment that if anybody's interested in serving as guest counsel, let your ward council members know, or your at-large council members know, your mayor, city staff, will get you on the roster. Even some repeats that have been several years ago, we could probably reconsider having them come back, but we always want to have the seat filled, so. We'll move right into section G, proclamation that we have presented before us. I'll go ahead and read it here, is the Fair Housing Proclamation. Whereas April 11, 2023 marks the 55th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, familial status, disability, and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. And whereas the Northeast Iowa Regional Board of Realtors is committed to highlight the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every one of their right to fair housing. And whereas, the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics commits, all realtors shall not deny equal professional services to any person for reasons of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, national origin, sexual orientation, or gender identity. Whereas, individuals in the city have the right to choose where to live without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, age, sex, disability, gender, identity, familial status, or national origin, and this city fully supports the intent and purposes of the Fair Housing, Federal Fair Housing Act, local fair housing laws, and follows practices in order to achieve its goals. Now therefore, as Mayor of the City of Waverly, Iowa, I do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Fair Housing Month. Entertain an agenda to approve the proclamation.
I would move to approve the proclamation as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Kengis, second by Bowfer. Council discussion, and I do know that we've got some guests from the Northeast Iowa Regional Board of Realtors with us to say a few words. You want to come forward and introduce yourself to the council and those watching, that would be fantastic.
Sure. Thank you for the invitation, Mayor Hoffman. It's a pleasure to be here. We have, I think it's something like 93 mayors that we send these proclamations to, and some send them back and some ask if they can keep them and display them in their office. So I'd suggest that you do that, is display it proudly. Fair housing is the law, it's not a choice, and the National Association takes that seriously. And so this proclamation has been around for a long, long time. I've had the pleasure of maybe about 15 years being involved as a leadership on the CEO of the board, and this is Sandy Stuber, he's on our DEI committee, and we're new to this. We don't claim to know a whole lot about it. We're starting out, so we are traveling, trying to figure out what other people are doing, rather than trying to recreate the committee and learn what we don't know, I guess. And so we're new to this, and we have a nice, strong committee, and we're going to Washington, DC in a couple of weeks to attend some of their seminars and learn, basically. So we don't have all the answers, but we know where to find them. So thank you for inviting us tonight, and thank you for the signature in your commitment.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you for your willingness to learn and expand your knowledge base to bring back here to the Cedar Valley, so.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments?
I would say anyone who wants to learn more about the need for fair housing should research redlining, kind of know what the history of redlining is and how housing has not always been fair.
And I would agree with that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move into item H this evening.
Do we have a voice vote on that?
Oh, yes, we do have a voice vote. Thank you very much, sir. The assumption was it would pass, so all in favor of approving the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Moving forward now with section H, public hearings, the date, time, and place for a public hearing on ordinance 1122 rescinding the acceptance of the dedication of Tagalong Trail and Heritage Hollow as city streets and vacating and conveying the rights of way to the owner, JNJ Investments LLC, without consideration. Mayor and council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. There any written or oral comments that you've received?
We have none, Your Honor.
Any comments from anybody in the public this evening? See, nobody rise? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move approval, second reading of ordinance 1122 rescinding the acceptance of the dedication of Tagalong Trail and Heritage Hollow as city streets and vacating the, conveying the rights of, rights of way to the owner, JNJ Investments LLC, without consideration.
Second.
Motion by Snyder, second by Bergen, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Go for it. Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero and one absent, the second reading of ordinance 1122 is approved. Move into item number, section I, public comments for items not on the agenda. Please submit your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Are there any public comments this evening? Once again, seeing nobody rise, we'll move forward with the consent calendar. We have three items, which will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item one is a pay request to Modern Design Incorporated for the Waverly Parks Maintenance Building remodel in the amount of $733.25. Second item is a pay request to Modern Design Incorporated for the Waverly's Park Maintenance Building remodel in the amount of $860. Third item is a pay request to WHKS and Company for the WPCF Improvements Construction Phase Engineering Services in the amount of $18,078.12. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
I will move approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie, council discussion if any. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion carries. Section K, regular business, item number one is resolution 23-52 approving a contract for payroll software from Ultimate Chronos Group, UKG of Weston, Florida. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 23-52, a contract for payroll software from Ultimate Chronos Group, UKG of Weston, Weston, Florida, for the implementation fee of $2,500 and the monthly subscription fee of $5 per active employee or a minimum of $1,000 per month, whichever is greater.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen, council discussion if any.
I just had a real quick question. I know that a lot of our employees were shifted over to Waverly Utilities a few years ago. How many employees do we actually have that are on this payroll system?
We have 75 full-time roughly, and then we have a number of seasonal and temps and that kind of thing.
Okay, so we'd be well over the $1,000.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So that's why it's basically going to be a thousand dollars a month. And as we talked about in budget, this is budgeted, it's a second of three series of software updates we're trying to do to get us completely paperless and much more streamline their process. So first one is finishing up the HR piece, this will be number two, the third will be a new financial system, hopefully in fiscal '25.
Anything further? Hearing nothing, roll call Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Myers.
Rothie. Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero and one absent, resolution 23-52 is approved. Item two is resolution 23-53 canceling Waverly's SRF-sponsored local water quality project and terminating the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 23-53 approving the cancellation of Waverly's State Revolving Fund, SRF-sponsored local water quality project for a wetland in northwest Waverly near railroad crossings at 20th Street Northwest, and terminating the April 19, 2021 professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for work related to the SRF-sponsored local water quality project according to section 13 of the PSA standard terms and conditions.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen, council discussion.
Can we get some input here?
If you really want it. You know, we have tried second time now to get a project like this done. First time, it was more ground issue, it didn't really have the suitability, and the part that did wouldn't work, farmers didn't want to sell it necessarily. We're running into the same situation here with the price of ground going as it is, we believe there's gold in the ground, and so we are not able to come to an agreement on the price anymore. Individuals doesn't want to sell the ground for what we can get approved through the FAA or not the FAA, excuse me, through the SRF, et cetera, to get this drainage done. So this has been going on for years, it feels like, and we just simply cannot get to that point. I don't think the city should authorize a significant amount of more money for what this would take. We already had a reappraisal done, got us a lot more than it was going to be, but that's still not enough. So we're to the point where we think it's best with everybody involved, just be done with this, and just leave it as it is. I don't know if we can even move forward to another project, I think we're running out of time, and this is not going to work unfortunately. So we tried, a lot of effort, Mike, staff, bills, I mean, a lot of effort's been put in both of these projects, and they simply just did not work. So it was unfortunate, but at this point, we just want to be done with it. So that's what we're asking you to do, is just cancel the whole thing.
It's too bad, isn't it?
I would agree. I thought they were both worthy projects, and we were hopeful that it was going to happen, it just doesn't always come together for one reason or another, so.
Yeah, I really hate leaving 1.4 million dollars on the table.
Possibly, yeah, it's right in there.
That's kind of money that I really wish we could have done something to improve water quality in the area, and I kind of wish more could have been done.
Yeah, and it's not even so simple, we could just take, well, we have 1.4 to spend, there's still requirements within that.
Right.
So much per acre, so much is approved. And we went as far as we could and pushed and pushed, and as I said, we paid for a second appraisal when the market went up and just could not get to a number that made sense, so unfortunate, that's where we're at.
Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero and one absent, resolution 23-53 is approved. Item number three is resolution 23-54 approving the City of Waverly's FAA application for federal assistance SF 424, and authorizing the mayor to sign the application. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 23-54 approving the City of Waverly's FAA application for federal assistance SF-424, and authorizes the mayor to sign the application.
Second.
Motion by Snyder, second by Kengis, council discussion if any. Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Kengis.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero and one absent, resolution 23-54 is approved. Item number four is resolution 23-55 approving McClure Engineering Company's task order number nine to the on-call agreement for engineering services and the construction materials testing quote for materials services at the Waverly Municipal Airport for construct taxiway connector project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 23-55 approving task order number nine to the on-call agreement for engineering services from McClure Engineering Company of Clive, Iowa, for the not-to-exceed amount of $72,950 and lump sum fee for project closeout services of $10,420, and the quote of $13,700 for materials testing services from construction materials testing in Des Moines, Iowa, at the Waverly Municipal Airport for the construct taxiway connector project.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero and one absent, resolution 23-55 is approved. Item five is resolution 23-56 approving a contract with HRS LLC for a site survey of right-of-way property adjacent to 10139th Street Northeast for consideration of the site for a new Waverly welcome sign, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution 23-56 approving a contract with HRS LLC of New Hampton, Iowa, for a site survey of right-of-way property adjacent to 10139th Street Northeast for consideration of the new site for a new Waverly welcome sign in the amount of $1,110, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Kengis, council discussion if any.
I really, in good conscience, can't support this resolution because I don't support putting up new welcome signs in Waverly. I was looking through the material that we received from MSA a year or two ago, and anticipated costs for the welcome to Waverly signs, replacing the ones that we currently have, their estimation was, at that time, $45,000 per sign plus a $15,000 contingency for a whole project of well over $200,000 for four signs. We already have signs, welcome, three welcome Waverly signs, they're not that old, they're in good shape, I understand that, in a, in a perfect world, and with unlimited funding, yeah, we could probably update them. But I think that at this point, they're still functioning as well as we would expect them to, I'm not aware of any substantial damage to the signs, and the fact that we already have signs, it's not like putting this money into something that we don't already have, this is just basically updating projects that we have already finished. And to me, that's not the highest priority use of these funds that I think that we can come up with. I would prefer to, you know, table any construction on new signs and put it off for probably as long as we can because we have a lot of other projects here that are coming up, Memorial Park, trail projects, and that kind of thing that are going to use this money. If we had a lot of extra money to do, yeah, let's go ahead and put in new signs, but we currently have signs, I really can't see spending money to replace that. And since I am not in favor of the project to replace the sign, I can't be in favor of the project to spend $1,100 for a survey to see if the site is appropriate for a new sign.
Do we know what the cost is actually going to be? I mean, were the MSA estimates accurate?
They're a little high, comparatively speaking, they've been high on the other signs that they estimated. We're looking at 45 to 50 probably.
For this particular sign?
For that new sign, yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty good size, sign, and it's pretty substantial with the footings and things. This is the one sign that we felt really needed to do. I think the other ones on the south side, and on the west side, and even up on the north side, probably don't need to be done right away. But this one, the sign's up on top of the hill next to Titan, but kind of behind the county fair sign that kind of gets lost up there. This is an opportunity that they're putting a new building in, and their business is going to be moving out there, and so we thought, and they would like to remove that berm, which is what we would like to have done too, and put it on that location, it's a really, we don't get many locations like that, that would be really good for this sign. So we really want to get that done, that's probably all we planned to do, we had probably more that we could do, but we're kind of looking at this one as the primary one.
Did we just have the one budgeted, or did we budget for more than the one?
There's more budgeted, but it was for other things in town, and we're really changing our way, they're talking about kiosks that they suggested, we're talking about ways we can do different things with electronic, like you can just take your phone and pop up maps and put those at the different soccer complex or the baseball complex, and figure out how to do that once we have a place to do those, you can put up a sign with that kind of thing on it. So we're looking differently when it comes to those kinds of signs for around town, because you can keep them more accurate, too, you know, as businesses change, we can make that map change pretty quickly for people coming to town in those areas, so.
You mean for the wayfaring signs?
Well, the kiosk, so that they can find businesses around town. And we think that's probably more accurate, if they can see that, get on this map and you can see where everything is. So we're going to try to get that done as opposed to, and that should be a lot of cost, so.
So as far as the site we're looking at tonight, there's a picture of the intersection, and are you thinking of putting it right there on the corner, or just someplace on that berm, or, because that's right across the road from Titan, right to the west?
It's actually, yeah, but when you come in, when you're coming into town, you're looking that direction.
Yeah.
And right now, it's, we'll be putting it about between those two poles. The left pole would have to be lower, Waverly Utilities will lower that pole, they're talking about taking four to six feet off of that berm, and then we'd be able to set up our, where our footings would be on the Elsom Miller side, because we can't be in right-of-way, but we can be right next to the right-of-way. And so it'd be a really good location.
So their building, that they're proposing to build, is going to be set back a little bit, so it's not going to get lost in there?
It's going in now.
It's in there now.
It's going, yeah.
Our sign will be very noticeable, but their property will be much more noticeable with that gone too around it.
The berm.
And so we're, we're working with them. The survey is more than that, he's going to shoot the elevations for everything and kind of identify where the elevations can be, and so he's going to really create a site plan for the DOT. We've already been, we had a teams call with three or four of the DOT members about this. Elsom Millers have been talking with CenturyLink and Mid-American, and we've been talking to utilities about how we can accomplish this. We think it's a good site for the, coming into town and not having this kind of, it gets grown all over quite a bit, it's really not a very attractive way to approach that site, so we're just trying to do this cooperatively with a cooperative partner in the land acquisition for the sign.
So you don't think you're going to run into problems with the DOT?
No, we don't, they're, they just want to see what we're doing. More importantly, they only care about that Mid-American Gas is going to move their gas line, it's already on the Elsom Miller property by easement, and so they want to get it off there anyway, and they're going to put it on the ditch side, so that'll be moved. The Mid-American, the telephone lines, there's a big bundle with five or 10 of them that are live, so they have to trench it and drop it, and I think that's what Elsom Millers and their excavators are talking about, doing that work. So we're just working on doing the poles and getting, and then they'll move the dirt themselves, because they'll use the dirt around their site. So it's just really a work in progress, but we think it's still a great location, given kind of where we ended up at that sign on top of the hill that doesn't, isn't very noticeable from the east, and that's kind of, that's a busy intersection coming in.
And the picture is what it's actually going to look like?
Yes.
Okay.
Before, the one that, that they had estimated, I think it was going to be more like 70,000, was because they were using a limestone sheets type of thing, and Nagel came up with the idea of using the half box, and they're a lot cheaper, and we think it really fits in with kind of what we've used around town for some of the limestone things that we use, so. We're just trying to make a good impression and see how it looks, and we, these are not, these are not have-tos, but they're, when you have an opportunity for the site that works, I'd like to do this one, the ones on south and west are still there, they can still work, I'd like to do those in future years, but, and the one up on the north side with the airport, because the airport would like to have their own sign, and there's a welcome sign on one side, and there's an airport sign on the other, so I think that's, that'll be done at some point, but that doesn't have to be maybe as large as this one either, so.
Look, I'm not disputing the fact that it would be nice to have a new sign there, okay? My issue is, is it going to be worth $45,000 of benefit to have a new sign there? And to me, it seems like there are a lot of other things that that $45,000 could be spent on that it's not really going to have, that would have a larger impact on promoting the city than having another sign out on the east side of, on the east side of the city limits. So that's my issue, it's not that I don't like the sign, it's not that I don't want a sign, I just think that there are other projects that would have a greater impact than a new sign, so that's my issue.
Now, the source of funds that this is coming from, you said it's budgeted, is this hotel motel tax, is this road use tax?
This is capital improvement fund.
Capital improvement fund.
This is phase two, second year of the wayfinding five-year plan you accepted, it's in the budget you approved. The $135,000 that's in there, the CIP is for this sign as well as a number of other smaller signs that may shift, may not, but this is the second year of the five that we're pushing forward. So I understand what Bill's saying about the other signs, but they are slated to be replaced as well. It was kind of a, as we go through this, we were going to try and knock these down as the funding was there. I understand your concern, Rod, I do, $45,000, some of the money, we're just presenting to you what the plan was and trying to continue going forward for the years that we have, and this is the biggest piece of that next year plan.
I do think that we do have to look at things in a little bit different light, you know, to Rod's point, I, you know, if we were, especially if we were bonding out for 10 years, I'd maybe have a little more concern on this, but I, you know, I don't think it's a needed item. But yeah, it's nice to have, but if, I think these are the kinds of things that if we're really careful with, we won't run into other situations, you know, in future budgets, it just could make it a little bit easier, and I know these are, it's not easy voting no on some of this stuff, but I guess that's the way I see it as well.
So if we don't spend it on this sign, what happens to that money, what else can it be spent on?
It sits in the fund.
The capital improvement fund or the wayfaring fund?
It could put it towards the $9 million pool, I guess, if that gets voted, or the golf improvements, whatever else in Memorial Park, I mean, it is $45,000, we're talking millions for that project as a whole, so whether it goes there or spend on something else, that's completely up to you. Like I said, we're bringing forth second year five, this was included, we needed the contract to actually get the grading done and make this one happen, since this is the largest portion of that package, we want to get it done and get it started as moving forward, but obviously, your free vote is you need to, and we'll adjust regardless.
I would also, I would just maybe say that the other thing we would like to do is if, if you may think it'll happen next year, we'd like to work with them to get the site secured, so that if we don't do it this year, we can ask again next year to do it in that same year. The $1,100 is really probably well spent, it was a pretty reasonable fee for what they're all going to do for it, and I think knowing that, then we can get the site set up and get an easement agreement with them to do the sign next year.
I guess.
If you choose.
I guess my initial concern with it, and Rod makes a good point on the spending the money and whether...
and whether, you know, whether we hit a need or a want right now and especially some of the decisions we have to make, but my concern was just kind of the location because where we've got right now, this is actually moving it back more into town than on the edge of town than where the current one is. And so it's, to me, it's kind of like strategic positioning where is a better location, especially if the town were to grow further east. And then we have people driving past, coming, oh, now we're in town. Well, you're actually in town.
It is a valid point.
That was more my concern is why, the economic or the impact value of why having it here versus further east on the actual edge of town where it is now.
So if we looked at, we looked at locations like that, we looked at the entire next mile or two the other direction, it isn't really very easily developable. You've got the fairgrounds that are going in and there's a waterway. And then there's, I mean, there's no good location to put it. If you go to the next highway or next gravel road, it kind of is going uphill. It's not a place to sit it. This actually is a, it's pretty close to the east side of town for a long, we don't really have much plan to go farther east without a lot of infrastructure change. And in terms of, it's closer to the highway, it's going to be positioned better. It's not going to be up on top of the hill and it's going to be a lot larger. So that's why we want it to be significant. If we were going to do something, you don't want to just do a small thing that nobody's, you can't see it up there very well anyway, to be quite honest with you. And going in farther town, I've been looking at these, we've been doing this for two years in different communities and I see them in different places. Sometimes they're ways in, sometimes they're right on the edge, sometimes they're way out. It really depends on where they can find good locations with good, with good lining of sight, because if you're coming into town from out of town, you're pretty much going to go into the middle of town and so you're going to go buy it at some point. And it's just one of those things that it looks, it looks like we're a progressive, well-to-do town that is ready for visitors and ready for residents and ready for businesses.
I'm just coming over this resolution again. Does this, if we approve this, does this give you, does that lock up the, does that give you what you need as far as having the property locked up for you? So?
Well, we are still on, we are still working with the sharing of some expense for that site. So there may be some expenses for the utility movement. So we're still working on that aspect of it. So.
Would that utility movement be done after the approval of the fifty thousand dollar sign?
No.
Okay.
We would do, I mean, the private people we're talking with, they would like to get it done for their own benefit. And if we're going to benefit from it, they'd like us to participate in some of that. We, that's why we want to do the site plan. We've talked about working with, we have the utilities. The gas is being moved off their property onto the right of way. And the, so we're just trying to figure out how to pay this. I mean, if we were going to buy a site from somebody else or purchase the rights to a site, there's a lot of people that would ask to do that. They're not really asking for any dollar amount, they're just asking us to work with them. Right now, we don't know what that means yet.
Is it fair to say that the neighbors, the developer there or the property owners would have a benefit, mutual benefit to the fill that's being removed and replaced onto their property? So this is a good opportunity that in the future, if this is undertaken, we'd be possibly paying more because we're having to haul fill away.
I don't know if they, you know, they might do it on their own. I don't know. They might say, well, if you didn't help us, you can find another place for your sign. I mean, they've never been like that. They've been cooperative and very, working with us very, very well and really have reached out to utility providers and, so we're trying to work this together as a partnership here.
So all in all, this isn't a commitment to the construction of the sign itself? It's the land-based prep work, just for clarification purposes to anybody out there?
That's exactly right.
And that could be used how far into the future if we delayed the sign?
It would always be there for us to know what the elevations are and what it would take to, and what we could bring it down to. They're trying to identify where the poles have to be brought down to, where it would end up being. So it's going to be helpful for that purpose. Frankly, I thought it was going to be more for that. So appreciative that it was a reasonable fee just to help us with the surveying and the site surveying and elevations and that kind of thing. Because the elevations we have from the geographic server, they always, they're never, you can't tell if they're accurate or not. We really want to know what's actually there so we can actually plan for what they'd be brought down to and kind of show the DOT what would happen. And if we don't use it now, we may use it next year, but I'm sure that they can use it to do the work that they want to do to bring some of that site down.
And does this need to be done before the other prep work? I mean, you mentioned that there might be other expense for both them and the city. So does this need to be done in order to figure out that?
Somewhat, yes. Because we have to figure out how much they, we could bring it down or would want to bring it down. You know, they're moving the gas line. So Century Link's lot of wires are the ones that are going to be, and they've suggested to our partners that they could dig a trench next to it, find out where it is, and basically go down to the wires and then basically drop it into a deeper trench. So they're, and they're worried about, and they're going to do it themselves out there, I think, between the property owner and their excavator. So they are working on that aspect of it. So it's really the gas line being moved and they want it moved off their property anyway. And then the utility pole being moved down since it's about five or six foot taller than the other base, the other pole. And that's just a matter of identifying where we could put it and then saying, okay, here's our site so we know where we could put a foundation at some point.
Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Wolford.
No.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
No.
Kengis.
No.
About a three to three, resolution twenty-three dash fifty-six does not pass. Item six, resolution twenty-three dash fifty-seven, resolution fixing a date for a meeting on the proposal to reallocate certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation bond series 2019, general obligation bond series 2020A, and general obligation bond series 2021 of Waverly, Iowa and providing for publication of notice thereof. Entertain a motion.
I would move approval of resolution twenty-three fifty-seven, resolution fixing date for a meeting on the proposal to reallocate certain unspent proceeds of the general obligation bond series 2019, general obligation bond series 2020A, and general obligation bond series 2021 of Waverly, Iowa and providing for the publication of notice thereof.
Second.
First by Kengis, second by Bergen. Council discussion.
Could you tell us about this?
Yep, sure can. So we talked through budget. Part of the items that we were going to fund with these dollars are the jail roof improvements, our portion of it for law enforcement center, some of the improvement to the library roof itself, the concrete parking lot additions we're trying to do and repair. Normally, if we have a bond where the items from what is done in the OS are similar, we can simply apply it towards that. These are not specific enough and similar enough to those items that we felt we could just go ahead and do it. Bond attorney's agreed, so we're going to do a formal reallocation of those funds instead of normally utilizing for something similar. These were specific enough, it doesn't really work. So this will allow us to go ahead and fund those things we talked about instead of, it was in lieu of taxing forms, you tried to reduce budget amount. And so that's what we're going to kind of do here is go through each of these years bonds. There's so much left in each one from everything that was a part of it and it'll be reallocated then for roofer repairs, concrete, parking lots, et cetera. It's about two hundred thousand total for the three years.
It's like recycling.
Although it is, and we do have so much time to spend it down. You can certainly hold it for a certain amount, but we just want to utilize them, get them spent and move forward because each year that we hold out, it really doesn't help us. It's just money wasted, so let's reallocate them.
Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Wolford.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
About a six to zero and one absent, resolution twenty-three dash fifty-seven is approved. Section L's reports from boards and commissions, item number one is the Waverly Senior Center calendar for April 2023 is received into the record. On that note, they do share, the senior center shares their calendar, which includes all of their events, just to show what they're hosting. Some of those events are sort of private in nature, but they're using that facility. So that's what you see if you go on the website or what I've shared out there. They do have a public calendar for the public events that they host, which is a little bit different. They shared this calendar to exemplify to the, or just to show the council and city staff, you know, because we do provide funding to the senior center through our budget just of what all is going on, just so there's a clarification there that not all of those events on that calendar are public in nature. Section M is staff updates. Mr. Marner?
I think we have just a few tonight, sir.
Perfect.
Just a reminder, Good Friday's Friday, so, you know, city offices are closed, so double route will be on Thursday for recycling and garbage. So if your route's normally on Friday, it'll be on Thursday.
Get your stuff out on Thursday just a little bit earlier by chance?
As of last Thursday, the golf course is open, so not all days have been great yet, but it is open, so get out there and play.
I definitely saw some hearty souls out there Sunday morning.
Yeah. Justin, do you have a comment on bulky item pickup or are we kind of early with that?
Yes, it's the 24th through the 28th will be the bulky pickup. Yard waste will be the 24th through two weeks following that, so I'll announce that again at the council meeting as well.
I just saw that post out there, so I'll give you the opportunity to get it out there as well, so.
Okay, so bulk item pickup doesn't have to be on your regular garbage day?
No.
That's just call the, call the?
Yeah, you call in, you get on this. It waives a twenty-five dollar special pickup fee, but it does, the regular item charge is still on your account for the, whatever you're trying to get rid of.
Perfect. All right, city council comments. Mr. Bergen.
Well, let's see, as Justin alluded to, this going on in the next week, we have a holy week for the Christian faith. We have Passover going on. I know we've got Ramadan going on at the moment, so to everyone who's celebrating, you know, happy Easter, Passover, Ramadan, whatever you celebrate. Something else that caught my eye was the Warburg Clay Target Shooting Team won the national champions championship. So hopefully, we don't miss our shot to have them come visit us. And finally, anyone who wants to discuss city council business with me, please join me for a beer at the poorhouse.
Thanks, sir. Right on target.
I wanted to pick on the guest council seat and I wanted to wait for a time when there's nobody sitting in the seat so I can say what I have to say. I would, I'll put this as a first of the mayor and just looking for a second. I think that the program has outspent its useful life and I think it's something that we could look at. I think it's really important that we have the community engaged, but I don't think it's a great pro, I won't rail on it, but I think that's all I'll say about that. So if a second council person wants to, wants to bring that for discussion, but I might peacefully protest my next month and leave it sitting empty just like it is.
Right. Mr. Drinkhouse.
I'm going to second Matt's comments. I've never been a big fan of the guest council program, frankly. Those who've been on council for a while know that. So I think it either needs to be revamped with some very clear guidelines of who is going to be, you know, who would be eligible as a guest council or what the intention of the program is, or truthfully, I wouldn't have a problem with just dropping it entirely.
Anything further?
No, no, that's just the comments. I mean, obviously.
No, I haven't started saying anything.
No, 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 I'm fine.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Ms. Raffi.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but now I will say something. I think it's a useful program. I mean, I, some people disagree because it sort of got me interested in running for office and people might decide to get rid of it because of that. But, I mean, I, I have, June is my month and I've sent out an invitation to some high school students to see if they'd be interested. I think we need to think outside the box about who we invite and how we want to use the program, but I don't think we should discourage anything that gets people interested in local government and involvement. Because honestly, this is one of the few places that people do things in government where people aren't like nasty to each other and we actually get some stuff done. So even though it's just on a local level, but, I mean, I'd hate to see the program go away, but maybe we need to be more creative about how we use it or who we invite. I don't have any other comments.
All right. Ms. Wolford?
I don't have any comments either.
All right, I go to our guest council person, but Mr. Kengis.
It wasn't my intent to have it empty. I did ask several individuals and schedules just didn't line up this month for various reasons, including a last-ditch effort to him that was really more of a hail mary than anything. Having been on the council longest, I do find a value to having engagement and I have often tried to vary who I've brought in as guest council members. I've had students, I've had business owners, I've had, so I guess I've tried to mix it up that way just to, just to keep the variety of experiences and input that we can get. On the one hand, I do see at times it's very intimidating to come in as a guest council person and you only really have three meetings and to really jump in unless you've got a real passion for what's going on that particular month. We knew so many things that are kind of continual projects or things that happen, you know, we start something in March and we'll talk about it again in May. And so it's really hard necessarily to jump in in the middle and be tremendously constructive with that. So it is, I think it's worth talking about. I think it is a valuable program, I do think, but I do think it's worth talking about. Last thing, I appreciate the golf courses open. I was thinking about that Saturday morning when I was running around in the snow at Postville for a soccer tournament, so I noticed I didn't say anything last week about it because of the snow still happened, so.
I just have a few things to offer as we were fortunate that we weren't impacted by any damage through the storms that came through the state. We've had our fair share of inclement weather and flooding and near misses just to the south of town.
Can I ask a question? Is the bicycle trail open all the way? Is there any storm damage on that that we know of?
None that I know of, but I was out most of today. I didn't receive any texts or anything, so yeah, as far as I know, it's open the entire way.
Okay, well, I'm sure there'll be some people riding out on Tuesday looking for tacos, so don't let us know if there's any problems.
I'm sure we would have gotten some calls today in the office.
Yeah. Thank you, though. So just to count our blessings there, this evening, we had the one item on the agenda that identified, you know, a development under progress on the east end of town with, you know, some other developing out there, relocating. I just wanted to touch base, you know, oftentimes I get a Facebook message, a text message, a phone call face to face and somebody says, hey, what's going on across from, you know, Ivy? What's going on on the east end of town? What's going on, you know, here or there? Even though some of us on council may be privy to what's going on, there is a degree of confidentiality that does remain and exist until those businesses or individuals choose to make it public. So many times, there's developments that are, you know, being proposed and if those, that information gets out, it can jeopardize that development. And oftentimes, we've had developments change different course. And so if we start a rumor, then it makes, who's spreading that? Your council, your mayor or city staff for that matter even, that, well, we got this information, they were even wrong. You know, it's not our fault that that developer changed course and decided not to, you know, pull through. So that's why oftentimes or most of the time, you hear your council and city staff, I don't know because they don't know or I can't share. But that's the confidence that we have to have with our constituent base, the citizens, the developers, the business owners, that they can the developers, the, the business owners, that they can confide in the city to, you know, help them through processes of development and partnership with the city, so we have to protect that. It's not that we don't want to share, because we're all excited about new things and knowing what's going on, but as elected officials, you've put us here, and those business owners and developers expect us to maintain that level of respect for their, their operations. So it's not that we don't want to share, it's really that we, we can't and shouldn't, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
Second. First by Cangis, second by Bergen, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Thank you very much, we adjourn.